Hello, welcome to the April 2nd, 2024 Village Buchanan Organizational Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just so long.
Thank you. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is to read the results of the election. So for Mayor, two-year term, Teresa Nicobacher, 367 votes. Anthony Capicotti, 278. For trustee, Daniel Stewart, 329. Awil de Baez, 328. Richard Funchen, 322. Steve Laker, 314. And there were some write-ins. So for Mayor, Kevin Arisum, one vote. Peter Cook for Mayor, one vote. Martin Stewart for Mayor, one vote. Peter Cook for trustee, one vote. And Kevin Murphy for trustee. Now, I am going to ask our village attorney, Stephanie Portius, to swear me in oath of office. Before I get up, I'd just like to say Stephanie and I have worked together for many, many years here, and Stephanie has been our village attorney. We've been very fortunate to have Stephanie as our attorney all these years. Yeah, no, Stephanie has, has really, it's not just a job for her. She has, she really cares about this community and worries about our community and always does the right thing for the community. So we are very grateful and very lucky to have her. I'm trying to think, Steph, when you came in in 2008? So yeah, she's been our attorney for a while. We've been lucky. And I'm, when I, I do the swearing in this evening.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay. My biggest supporter isn't here this evening, but I have my grandfather's Bible. And my grandfather immigrated from Greece, and he married my grandmother, and they lived in the house across the street from me and raised their eight children. And every night, every night after dinner, he would read this Bible. So I'm sorry, I'm just getting emotional. But it's important to me to have this here this evening. So Stephanie, if you would be so kind to give me the oath of office.
Yes, please. And everyone, we will go to the podium for the oath of office. Okay, so I will start first.
And, and poor Stephanie has had to put up with me all these years, so some sympathy for you, Stephanie. Okay.
Can you read it again?
Yes.
I state your name.
I, Teresa Nicobacher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of mayor.
Of the position of mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you.
Well, well, Teresa. No one ever said I was, I was a delicate little butterfly today. Okay. A little entertainment. Hey, who is the next? Make us stand.
Okay. The next is Dan Stewart and Susan Suzanne Stewart will.
Suzanne.
Suzanne, sorry Suzanne, will do the oath of office.
Hopefully, he ever gets it right, though.
Thank you.
I.
I, Daniel Stewart. Do solemnly swear. That I will, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Position of village trustee.
Of the position of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Okay, Awil de Baez is next. And her husband Nelson will administer the oath of office.
All right, I'm short, so I'm gonna lower this a little. Wait. I think I have to hold up my hand.
I.
I, Awil de Baez. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Position of village of Buchanan trustee.
Of the position of the village of Buchanan trustee. According to the best of my ability.
And next is Mayor Teresa Nicobacher. Hereby appoints trustee Wheeler as her deputy mayor for the following official year, 2024 to 2025. Congratulations, Bob. And the following appointment of officials to be made by Teresa Nicobacher, except where otherwise indicated, subject to the approval by a majority of the Board of Trustees pursuant to Section 4-402, 4-402, 7-712, and 7-18 of the village law and Section 523 of the rail property tax law. All appointments are for one year, except where noted otherwise. So these, these are board appointments. So village clerk treasurer, Cynthia Kemter. Thank you, Cindy. Cindy does a great job. Our village deputy clerk, Sharon Murphy. Thank you, Sharon. Good, great job. Village deputy treasurer, Keith Douglas. Building inspectors, Brian and Peter Cook. Recreation supervisor, part-time, Jacqueline Pasquale. Village attorney, Stephanie Portius. Associate village judge, Daniel O'Neill. Village engineer, James Jahan Engineering. Village planner, planning and development advisors. So that's Dave Smith. Village prosecutor, Ingrid O'Sullivan. Planning Board Chairman, Jeffrey Fiella. And also Jeffrey for the Planning Board member. This is a five-year, you know, he was up for his five-year appointment. Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman, Gary Bell. And Zoning Board of Appeals Member till 2029, Ed Mevic. Can I have a motion to approve the board appointments? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, okay. The next is, doesn't require any approvals from the board. These are mayor appointments. Administrative entire board. Assessment entire board. Auditing entire board. Business development, Daniel Stewart. Education, Awil de Baez. Highway, Anthony Capicotti. Historian, George Boyle. Infrastructure, Robert Wheeler. Legislative is the entire board. Liaison to the Buchanan Engine Company, number one, that will be me, Teresa Nicobacher. Liaison to St. Patrick's Day Parade is Daniel Stewart. Local waterfront revitalization plan, Nicholas Zachary. And Nick, I didn't ask you, but you have been involved since the very beginning, and you are just an asset to have there. So you have a complete understanding of the local waterfront plan. It's what that is. So for people that don't know, we went in and got a grant with the town of Cortland, and it, it, Nick, I'm sure could, could discuss it more, but it has, you know, we're, we're doing a development plan for our waterfront, so. And it's through a grant with the town. And Nick has been very instrumental in that. New York State Indian Point Decommissioning Oversight Board, that's Teresa Nicobacher. Parks and Recreation, Awil de Baez. Public Safety, Robert Wheeler. Representative for Senior Citizens Advisory Council is Susan Juliana. Representative of the Historic Hudson River Towns is Anthony Capicotti. And Veterans is Dan Stewart. Just excuse me one second. There are a few things I have to read here at our organizational meeting, and so just please bear with me. But in the meantime, I'd, I'd like to recognize we have in the audience interim Town of Yorktown Supervisor, Ed Lacterman. Thank you for coming, Ed. And also his wife. So establishing meeting dates, special meeting procedures, and adoption of the rules of the procedure and the open meetings law. Regular meetings pursuant to Section 4-4112 of the village law, the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to be held on the first Tuesday of each month commencing at 7:00 PM. Where holidays shall fall on the day of a meeting, the meetings will be held the next, next day following the holiday. The meeting shall take place at the municipal building and/or on Zoom. The Board of Trustees workshop meeting is to be held on the fourth Tuesday of each month commencing at 7:00 PM and will also take place at the municipal building and/or on Zoom. Special meetings will be held when matters of business warrant and shall be called by either the mayor or by two of the trustees of the Village Buchanan acting together. In the event of a special meeting being called by the mayor, every member of the Board of Trustees shall be informed by the telephone, by the village clerk, or another member of the Board of Trustees of the date, time, location, and subject of the special meeting. And unless the meeting is called to respond to an emergency concerning the safety and welfare of the village, notice of the meeting shall be given to the trustees and newspapers and posted on the village notice boards at least 72 hours in advance of the meeting and otherwise in conformance with the public officer's law. A quorum shall be required to conduct business. A quorum of five board members of trustees shall be three. In the absence of a quorum, a lesser number may adjourn and compel the attendance of absent members. Executive session shall be held in accordance with the New York State Public Law's Section 105. All executive sessions shall be commenced at a public meeting. Voting pursuant to village law, each member of the board shall have one vote. The mayor may vote on any matter but must vote in case of a tie. A majority of the totally authorized voting power is necessary to pass a matter unless otherwise specified by state law. An absent, absentent, absence, uh, an absentention. Well, that's a tough word. Silence or absence shall be considered a negative vote for the purpose of determining the final vote on a matter. So guidelines for public comment. The public shall be allowed to speak and only during the public comment period of the meeting or at such other time as the presiding officer shall allow. Speakers must step to the front of the room and speak into the microphone. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization represented. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on a given topic and may be recognized again by the presiding officer after others speak and have had an opportunity to speak. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they have to another speaker. Board members, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification or information. All remarks shall be addressed to the presiding officer. Speakers shall observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, which include refraining from offensive, insulting, and threatening speech directed toward any person present or not present. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board with written communications. Written communications shall be delivered to the village administrator or clerk. The open meetings law pursuant to the public officer's law, the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the requirements of the open meetings law and hereby adopts the notice requirements of the public officer's law as the official procedure of the Board of Trustees. The next organizational meeting will be held on April 8th, 2025, and I expect all of you to be here for that. Setting date for a public hearing on tentative village budget pursuant to Section 5-508 of the village law, the public hearing on the tentative budget will be the first Wednesday following the organizational meeting at 7:00 PM at the village hall or, and/or on Zoom. So tomorrow night is our public hearing for our budget. To designate the village depositories pursuant to Section 4-412 of the village law, that the Orange Bank and Trust Company, 2141 Crom Pound Road, Cortland Manor, and the PCSB Bank, 2651 Strang Boulevard in Yorktown, and the New York Class be designated as a depository of the Village Buchanan and that funds of the village be deposited in said bank and be subject to the withdrawals upon checks, notes, drafts, bills of exchange, acceptances, undertakings, or other orders for the payment of money when signed on behalf of this village by any of the following officers: Mayor, Teresa Nicobacher; Village Administrator, Marcus Serrano; Deputy Mayor, Robert Wheeler. The official newspaper, whereas in the opinion of the Board of Trustees, the aforementioned village, the Journal Newspaper, is hereby designated as the official newspaper of the Village Buchanan. The established mileage allowance rate for reimbursement, whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to pay a fixed rate for mileage as reimbursement to village officers and employees who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees will approve reimbursement to such officers and employees at the rate established by the IRS regulations. Adopting the village procurement policy, whereas the mayor and the Board of Trustees, the Village Buchanan are required to adopt or formulate certain policies and procedures regarding procurements by the village, and whereas the village has previously adopted a procurement policy in conformance with all New York State laws and in conformance with the State Office of the State Controller. And the Board desires that policy to remain in effect. The procurement policy now in effect is once again adopted as the procurement policy of the Village Buchanan. Authorizing officers, employees of the Village Buchanan to attend conferences and seminars, whereas General Law 77-B authorized municipal officials and employees to attend schools, conferences, seminars, et cetera, conducted for the benefit of local government with prior approval of the Board of Trustees. And the mayor and the Board of Trustees, the Village Buchanan, have determined that it is in the best interest of the village and its residents that officers, employees of the village from time to time attend conferences and seminars of public employees and officials for educational and training and other similar purposes. It is therefore resolved that the officers and employees are hereby authorized to attend the following schools, conferences, seminars, et cetera. NICOM's Annual Meeting and Training School. NICOM's Fall Training School for Fiscal Officers and Municipal Clerks. NICOM's Election Seminar. So NICOM means New York Conference of Mayors, because there's always these little abbreviated things and people don't understand. New York State Controller's Advanced Accounting Course. New York State City County Management Association Annual Conference and Fall Training. Westchester Municipal Planning Federation Seminars. Westchester County Firearms and Deadly Physical Force Training. Is that something the board can do? No, I'm kidding. Westchester County Police Academy Basic in Service Training. Police Chiefs Association Regional and National Conferences. New York State Government Firearms Office Finance Officers Association Regional and National Conferences and Classes and Womenars. Public Employer Risk Management Association, TMA, Regional and National Conferences. Westchester County Municipal Clerks and Treasurers Association Meetings. Municipal Administrators Association Metropolitan New York Meetings. International City Management and Associations Meetings, Conference, and Seminars. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the trainings. Can I have a second? One second. All in favor?
All right.
So that wasn't so bad. If. I'm gonna open it up to the audience if anyone in the audience would like to make a comment. And I also want to recognize our police chief, Shane Farrell, is here with us this evening. And we also have Rich Funchen, who just ran in this election. I also mentioned Nick Zachary, who is one of our planning board members. And also, I also mentioned, you know, his other, his other gig, as they say. Would anyone like to comment from the audience?
Yes, I, I'd just like to congratulate all the winners and wish the board well in the, in the future years. I also would like to give a shout out and thanks for everybody who did vote for me. And thank you very much and, and the best to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, and according to our rules, if you could state your name.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Michael Vicaro. I live in Buchanan, Rockledge Avenue, been here for 27 years. I also want to offer my congratulations to Mayor Nicobacher and all of the other elected officials. Thank you for representing our village for so many years. I've been a firsthand witness of it all. I'm here representing the Hendrick Hudson Baseball Program. Back in 2016, a few of you here and in the audience transformed the pavilion field into a beautiful 60-90 size baseball field, which was much needed at the time. We had one, and we had about eight teams that wanted to play. So thanks to the village at the time, we were able to expand that and get a lot of use out of it. And I know it's been used spring, summer, fall ever since, so thank you. I am one of the newly appointed co-coaches of the modified baseball team. And we will be playing our home games here, which I think have been done in recent years. I'm here to request and find out the procedure to get the bathrooms open during the games. Just the game dates. There's about seven to eight game dates all during the week. Monday through Friday, a random day per week between end of April and the end of May. 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. To be used by parents, grandparents, fans, players, umpires. It's just nice to have. I think you've all been to a baseball game and would like to have some sort of restroom to use. So I don't know the procedure. I just would like to ask the board what the next steps are, if that has to come from Mr. Baker from the high school or what we need to do.
We, haven't we had the, the porta potties or, or you're not, you would like?
What would you rather use?
The bathroom.
Be honest, it's a little embarrassing for the coaches, the umpires, and even some grandparents to go use a porta potty that's standing in left field for everybody to see. It's nice that they can just get into the bathroom where it is.
You know, I would have to ask the board, but I, I don't really have a problem with you using that, and we'll discuss that right now because you want an answer. But I don't know if we, I, I think the only way we could really do it is to give them a key and make them responsible for opening and closing.
I would be the person responsible. We would make sure we lock it. If we forget to lock it for any reason, I live a mile away, we'll come back and lock it. But we will make sure that is on our checklist of things to do when we leave the field, that we lock the bathroom.
What are other thoughts?
I'm, I'm perfectly fine with this. I think it's a reflection of our school district and our community, and I, I completely understand where Mike's coming from. Let's give them the best of the facilities that we have rather than a porta potty. I'm, I'm for it.
Thank you.
I'm okay with it, as long as you do have to get the keys to the pavilion itself also. So you have to get through the gate, which you know about that, because that's, the bathrooms are behind the gate. And as long as you guys take responsibility for any damage, I have no problem.
I don't have a problem either. My question would be who would maintain the bathrooms?
I mean, we would certainly leave it the way we found it.
Okay.
If there's a tremendous mess that we're unable to take care of. I think we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it, but hoping people would be reasonable with it. But we will give it a good once-over before we leave.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
All right. I hope that answers your question.
That does, and as far as getting, I don't need the key today, but do I come to the village? How does that work?
Yeah, you'll come to the office, and Cindy or Sharon will give you the keys that you need.
Great.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so Dan, would you like to, to say anything? Oh, oh, no, okay, I'll go last. Awil, would you like to say anything?
I just want to thank the residents of Buchanan for your vote of confidence. My goal is to work with the board so that we can make an impact, a positive one, on the village. And we will definitely be speaking with you. We will definitely be listening to you, and the goal will be to make this a great trip. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Awil. And many of you know me, I have been around for a while. You know, I thank everyone for their support. I thank the residents who have supported me my, my whole term. We've been through some challenging times, we've been through some good times, some bad times, and I have always appreciated your support. That's, that's what keeps me going. It's the feedback from the residents. When we were out campaigning, I was able to meet a lot of our newer residents, and they are just so happy to be here, and we're happy to have them. You know, they, they realize what a gem the Village Buchanan is. This is a fantastic community. And I always say, we're the last of the small-town USA. So they know when they come here, they realize, you know, where they've moved, and we need to keep improving. We've, and then just going out, meeting some of the residents, you know, that I don't, I don't run into everybody every day, so it was great talking to people I've known for many years. And I have to tell you a funny story. I, I went to one house and they said, Teresa, I've got to show you something. And I'm like, oh, boy, what's that? And his son came out with, and this goes back a ways ago, and I have to, I'm sure I have one, but it's, it's a yellow pin about that big, and it's a smiley face pin. And that's when I ran many years ago, I ran on an independent party. It was called the Good Government Party. And his son pulls out this pin, and I was just like, oh, my God, you held on to that all these years. It was, it was great to see it, but, you know, this is, this is why we work so hard. We have a great community, and I just wanna, I want to say, I'm just humbled. I am just completely humbled by the support that I receive from the residents each and every year. I am always available. Soon I will be out at the Circle every day, so you can come visit me out there. And I've always made myself available to all the residents. I, I do have a list of things, so I'm gearing up for the new, the new year. And I just want to go over some of the things that I think are important for the board to work together on. And of course, we're all in agreement with the tax agreement with Holtech. It's a pilot program, it's a pilot payment, payment in lieu of taxes. We will continue to get the best, best offer that we can get from Holtech. We're also going to continue to work on the rezoning of the Holtech property, which is important to us. So whenever any parcels become available, we'll be able to move on that quickly. The sewer treatment plant, that's still on the table. We'll be resubmitting grants again this year, and then we are going to have to negotiate with the state. They hold approximately a little less than $7 million now of the Energy Community and Environmental Fund. And that, some of that money is supposed to go for the upgrade of our sewer treatment plant. So looking forward to getting that moving again. We also, there's other grants that are out there, and I, I just, I don't know why, it just came to my head one day. And I've asked Marcus to check with the grant writers, but over at Lenz Cove, that's a over at Lenz Cove, that's a beautiful park over there, but it's, the parking lot is lumpy bumpy. And that was our old garbage dump. That's where the garbage truck years ago would go over there and, and dump. And it is settling. It's settling from all the garbage. Everything was put in there. I'm telling you, the kitchen sink, you name it, that was dropped there. So it's settled over the years. It's bumpy. And we had a company here, a standard brand, that would make oil, they call it oil cloth, oil cloth. And as I've been told in the past, what happens, there's a brook that goes by there. And people would know what color this company was using that day because if they were using a red dye, then Dicky Brook would be red. So I'm kind of hoping we can look to see if there's any money for, you know, to cap that because it is environmentally sensitive and I, we don't know what the heck is dumped in there. So hopefully there's some kind of grant money out there that we can access to see if we can get that parking lot done. I'd like to see the highway, the highway garage painted. I know right now we are kind of tight on staff down there. I met with Scott Horton, who's our head of highway the other day, and he said he was the only one in the highway department that day. I'd also like to, and these are all things up for discussion, but these are just things that came to my head in the last week. I'd like to also relook at submitting a grant to paint the pavilion. So we'll discuss that. We'll see if that's something the direction the board wants to take with the grant, but under the circumstances with the shortage of the staff and the summer coming, I'd like to see that get done to protect the pavilion, and that's the last thing with the renovation of the pavilion that we'll have to do. The circle, I know Bob brought up taking the trees down out of the circle, and he will continue to work with the beautification committee on that to see what kind of thoughts they come up with together, and Bob will bring that forward back to the board. We have an active recreation committee and we're looking to enhance our recreation. And they have a survey that will be coming out in the May newsletter. And I know, Marcus, you were working on Survey Monkey or something like that. So they would like to get feedback from the residents of, you know, what they would like to see in recreation here. And then we also, I think as a board, I think I'd like to see the community become more involved because, you know, we don't have all the answers here. You guys know what you want for the village. You know what's needed here. So I think we, as a board, need to figure out what kind of surveys that we could send out to you to see what, what your thoughts are. The cell service. I, I saw it firsthand. I was on one of the roads here in the village and I don't want to say where because it's kind of a security thing, but my call dropped. So I understand the police and the fire department have had issues with our cell phone service. So at our workshop in April, we will have the cell phone tower people come in to explain to us what that is. And then we have to hold public hearings for that also. So hopefully within a year or so, we should have better cell phone service here. What else on my little to-do list that we're gonna all discuss together? The Con Edison property. We have a paper road behind the highway department. And Con Edison, I believe, has taken over that paper road and expanded their, their equipment onto our paper road. They have not been too helpful in trying to resolve that, but I'd like to, as a board, work on that and see, you know, we don't want to lose our property. We have, we actually have a paper road there. One of the other things I think would be nice for the village, I don't know if anybody's been up to Lake Carmel, and they have the flags around the lake, the American flags. And I thought, you know, and Dan is the liaison to the veterans. I was thinking maybe we could work on having flags put out in front of the village hall and maybe have them donate it by the family members and maybe a little plaque on it for their family member. So I'd like to see if we can get that done before Veterans Day. I think that would be a nice tribute to our veterans here. Cameras at the village hall. And I know you said we had no Wi-Fi at the pavilion, but maybe we need to start looking at that. The one thing, you know, we'll still continue to work on is the, it's tough dealing with the federal government. They're brutal. They're just brutal, but there is money that is available. The Stranded Act, I've mentioned that before. That's gonna be, you know, that's gonna be a challenge, but I think what we should go after is there's a fifteen million dollar fund that Nita Lowey had set up when she was Congresswoman. And now Chuck Schumer has a different name for it, but it's fifteen million dollars and it's for nuclear communities with closed nuclear power plants. But the only caveat with that is you have to, you have to go through the E D A. So, and that, and you have to create jobs. So we have never been eligible for that money. So I'm hoping that we can work together and see if we can get some of that money because we are not going to be able to access that money for a long time. The town is eligible to access that because they can produce jobs when they build down at the quarry there. So I'm kind of hoping that maybe that, that could get changed a little. But that's a whole process dealing with Gillibrand, Schumer. And Mike Lawler has been very, very, very supportive. So, you know, us working as a board, let's see if we can get access to some of that money. So there's thirteen, I believe thirteen other communities that are in the same position as we are. So if we can't get the Stranded Act to go through, then this is another potential way to get some financing because we have those spent fuel rods over there and we never, the village never agreed to that, nor did anyone else, nor did Entergy and Holtech. So they need to compensate us. So I, in the end, I'm sorry, I just, I just had a few thoughts. It came to my mind, sorry. So hoping, I'm hoping that the board can work together to accomplish these things. And I'm hoping that we can communicate effectively because, you know, we all come from different backgrounds. We all have different ideas and things that we see that might be good for our village. So I'm looking forward to working with the whole board. I congratulate Dan. I congratulate Awilda. And together we go forward and make this the best community we possibly can. So I thank you all.
Thank you.
And we do have some refreshments out in the hallway after. And for anyone else that would like to join us, I, we will be going to Fat Sal's after to have celebratory glass of lemonade. And I'm more fun than that. Anyway, so thank you all for coming. Appreciate your support. And as they always say, oh, wait, no, first I have to make a motion to close the meeting? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
First, I'd like to congratulate Awilda and Dan and their, and their campaign and their, and their election to their seats. And I really like to say something about Steve Laker. When I first got on the board, Steve was a very prominent figure for me because whenever I had a question about something, no matter what time of the day it was, I gave him a call. He helped me out. Smart guy. I know he had his heart in this village. And I just want to acknowledge that from me to him. I did speak to him briefly after the election, so I've been out of the state for a couple of weeks. I was in flight as the last meeting was going on. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I'd like to thank the mayor for pointing me to the deputy mayor. And I do look forward to working with the whole, with the board. I think everyone in this board does have what's, what's in the heart of this village.
So can I have a second?
One second.
All in favor? Have a great Buchanan day.